Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being with us. Our public media is down at the Council of Water. We appreciate all of you being with us. We'll put some extra chairs up along with just a few extra minutes. We want to accommodate as many seats as we possibly can. So thank you for being with us. There's a sign up sheet in the back if you would like to. We ask that you sign up. We'd love to know who is here with us this evening. Mr. White, can you attest to where?
Yes, sir, we do.
And that's a federal show, Mr. Faust, to pass.
Sorry.
This is on our agenda. We have the invocation, Mr. Dean Monk, you are with us, sir. And as we go towards an invocation, Reverend Monk, you're with us on Black Mass. We all live in the state of Texas and those that are impacted by the natural disaster that has...
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, Father of verses, we come before you in the name of the one by whom you made the world, acknowledging the thrones and dominions and principalities and powers, such as that represented in this Jasper City Council. All things are created by him. Before him, and he's before all things, by him, all things are held together. You alone knows fully what is in man, you will work in it amongst us. We might have clean hands and a pure heart. We might not lift up our soul unto vanity nor swear deceitfully. Granted, we walk not in the counsel of the ungodly nor stand in the way of sinners nor sit in the seat of scorn. Help the members of this council and those who address them this evening speak the truth in love. May all things done here tonight be done decently and over. Remind us that every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation, and every city divided against itself shall not stand. That every idle word that men shall speak, they shall give account thereof in the day of judgment. And do remember with your healing and comforting hand those that are suffering in the state of Texas over this terrible flood, when we always look to you for our sustenance, forgiveness, and Lord, your guidance for the days ahead. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Thanks, dear. Amen.
Amen.
Sir. How far from the end of prayer, sir?
Yes, sir.
Let's leave you just to apply the United States Constitution into your brother for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever-suc又有
Was that X? Counselors, we have an agenda before you that was previously distributed. Count the floor for a motion.
Make a motion, the agenda be accepted, our thought is given.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
I would say. Thank you, counsel. First on our list is the appointments for the downtown developer. Ms. Paula Blenner. Counselors, you're aware, we have a public process in which we gather applications of those that are interested in our community of serving with the availability to some of our authorities. Ms. Paula has been vetted through the requirements. She meets all the requirements. She is a business owner here inside the Incorporated City Land and City Jasper. She is excited to serve. Her current information's been presented. And I would ask that you appraise her appointment form to DDA. Give the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that we appraise her from the DDA position.
I'd say. Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
I would say. Thank you, counsel. And thank you, Ms. Paula, for being willing to take your volunteer and serve your job. Next item on our agenda is the public comment period. I'm not excited to ask the folks with us to see this season. So what I want to do is add, we'll do it all of our public comment section while we read the guidelines first. Number one, the mayor's going to announce the public comment section of the agenda. It's not allowed in public forum. The individual making comment must state their name and address. You have to keep physical presence here to do so. Comments are limited to city matters. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Mayor has the right to extend time. No personal attacks or unwarranted accusations. The mayor, provided officer, has the right to end the comment or comments due to violations of rules and/or length of the agenda. Individual comment can only exercise their public comment section of being what's the making. No individual can allocate or transfer their time for comment to another person. No inappropriate language, signs, or images. And the public comment period is limited to a total of thirty minutes. As we have done since January, this council, this discussion we had is the public comment section because we believe in listening to the public. We want to hear from you guys. I'm excited there are some here that have signed up. There's a good bit in the room, but I will start at very top. My name is Brian Jones. Thanks, Jones.
So first off, my name is Brian Jones. I live at twenty forty-one Cove Road in Jasper. I also own property on time with the get, slightly old mines in the city of Jasper. I'm very concerned about the proposed gun range that is proposed to go down at East Purple Quarry. Myself and my family are very concerned about this. Not only how it will affect our property values, but also the noise that could potentially come off of this proposed gun range. Sent emails to Mayor Raffo back in June, asked him a few questions in regards to zoning implications for a gun range in the city. Currently, there is no room or is no mention of a gun range outdoor in your city ordinance. However, there is one for an indoor shooting range. The only question I had with the mayor was that it looks like the property is currently zoned RA. And would that necessitate a possible zoning change, which would also have a public hearing attached to it as well? Also, something was brought to me earlier from my in-laws. Section forty-six dash twenty-one, the discharge of firearms or fireworks, no person shall discharge firearms outside the city limits. How does that play into what we are proposing for the gun range? We personally believe, my wife and myself, that this area is one of the nicest areas in the city limits of Jasper, and it should be used as a public park or something of that nature, and not a, not a business, or not a business, but a use that could be detrimental to a primarily residential neighborhood. Because you have not only the houses up on Cove going towards Grandview, but also the division that you passed going down Cove. So I would ask that you reconsider having a gun range down there.
If you're...
Dead set on having it. To put it on five fifteen, somewhere where it's loud already. Talk to the sheriff of Pickens County, see if I could possibly use his gun range. A whole multitude of the ideas of putting it at the Cove, in my opinion, my family's opinion, is the worst possible idea.
Thank you for your time. Sir. Next on the listing, excuse me if I mispronounce this, Judy or Jim Tomer?
Your name?
Sorry if I mispronounced that.
You did it just right. I buried it. I've learned in fifty-four years out of the house. My name is Judy Hyland. We live at four twenty-three Wilderness Lane, which is a private road that runs off to Brashville. Our property, however, joins the city property down at Cove. So I want to echo what Mr. Jones just said, that it is a beautiful piece of land and has had recreational use. We ride horses down there, I think horses and gun ranges go habitate very well. So we also would like to request that the city reconsider their thought to put a gun range down there.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Hurn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir.
My name's Keith Hurn, and I live at fifteen fourteen Cove Road, which is below the spilt from the projected right. I will repeat the ordinance of forty-six twenty-one codes nineteen seventy-nine thirty-one dash one oh two, discharge of firearms, city cross street fireworks, so on and so forth. My question is, have you done an environmental impact study on where the range is going to be? Have you surveyed where the range is? Will it be in the flood plain? Lead bullets will be a concern. I spoke with EPD, they will monitor the surface water and grounds where the lead bullets stand. The DNR will supervise with the destruction of the range, according to them. And is it a good idea to be depositing lead in the ground above where you take water out for city water? Lot to mention the noise. The current gunfire that we hear kind of from there is very loud, and it's denying us the peaceful quiet enjoyment of our property. A nine-millimeter cartridge has a range of one and a quarter miles. So if there's an accident, if there's anything that happened, that's how far that bullet can travel, one and a quarter miles. I know that from my lifelong shooting competition. I've been shooting competition for fifty years. The real estate value in Georgia's been assessed that an outdoor gun range in vicinity of residents can devalue the real estate as much as five percent. I think the city needs to look at another area, maybe get with the county. I know the county and the sheriff's office here have a working relationship, at least I hope you do, with law enforcement. There's an established range that's already in place. I would lobby that you try to work out some agreement with the Pickens County Sheriff's Department. And, you know, we moved here twenty-one years ago. Sort of the quiet, peace and quiet of the properties that we purchased. Over the years, we've had to tolerate the motorcycle with no buffers, the cars with no buffers. A lot of the years y'all come sit on our strange horse and listen. And now you're talking about adding gunfire. Gunfire, average gunfire is one hundred and thirty-eight decibels. That travels through these valleys. It just echoes. And unless you spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to put up buffers, you can't control the doors, probably. So I respectfully ask you, counsel, reconsider the right.
Thank you, sir. Matthew and Brooke, counsel.
Come on.
Since you've been, I accept.
Hi.
Let's shift again.
I'm Brooke Parks, and I have some Matthews here. We also own property on top of the mine. And we live at the top of Cove Mountain. We're very concerned about the gun range. I feel like not only the noise, which is a huge concern because it appears that they're going to look at maybe doing trains at night. That's very concerning. So not only noise, but our children hike in that area. They ride ATVs in that area. So it's very concerning to us. I think it's, we, again, as you mentioned, if there is a gunshot in that area, it echoes with the mine, the surrounding mountain around. Down in that little valley, so we're going to hear it. They're going to hear it on Grandview, we're going to hear it on Cove, and you're going to hear it probably all the way to the end of Cove Road. I think it's going to be very loud. It's very concerning. What's going to stop the, like, if they're just shooting down there, there's cars going by, it just doesn't sound like a good idea or a good area to have this set up. I hope so.
Let's pray. Marina Leonard?
Here.
My son who I also signed to speak, if he came in after me, is active. Okay. We're living the same address. We live at one oh nine Reese Ridge, which is also just above the Cove. And we echo everything everybody has already said, as well as wanting to add our concerns, again, kind of reiterating, about the quality of life and the sound impacts. We can comfortably sit on our front porch on top of the Cove and enjoy listening to the high school band practice over at PHS. The sound travels so clearly through the Cove. It's miles and miles away from us. So if there is a gunshot, it travels the same way. So we expect the sounds that could be coming from this range to travel and impact everybody along the Cove, not just right there at the range. In addition, I personally feel like this is one of the most unique geological features that we have in our city. It's a beautiful area. It would be a shame, in my opinion, to utilize it for something like this instead of taking advantage of its situation and its beauty.
Tell me something else.
I'd like to add the fact that there are so many different species of wildlife that refuge down in that area because there have been so many, you know, large negatives put in around Grandview and around Old Cove Road. This is a special and detrimental spot for all of those animals, especially the bears coming tearing into my arbitrary two to nine.
Detrimental, detrimental if we built in this in this spot.
Yes, yes, sorry. So I think that we should also take on the impacts that may have on the animals and wildlife to find a home down in the desert. Not only that, but I also believe that the noise, noise carried by the gunshots could carry all the way down to the Tate House. I've heard the marching band playing from there before as well. I think there's just a lot that could be done with this area. I'm not opposed at all to a gun range being made. I just agree with Brian. I believe it should be done closer to the center of town to five fifteen.
Somewhere where it's already noisy.
Exactly. So that's all I have to say.
And it won't carry so far.
Yeah.
Thank you for the point.
Thank you, boss.
All for the record, city court pleasure, we all need to decide that on our list for the public comment period. I want to reiterate, since we have a range of people, I really enjoyed having everyone here. Doesn't matter whether you're a city resident or a county resident, important part is that we communicate that we hear you and that you hear us. And Mr. Jones, you had mentioned the email, thank you, sir. And often, I just don't experience from this point of view. You can't interpret tone in a test message or anything. And so I didn't want to come across as being mean or hateful or short. I find that face-to-face direction from outgoing engagement like this is best. And so we're here to help alleviate some of your anxiety about it. And I didn't want to look at that word to come across as a bad word in the email. Later on in our agenda, we do have the mayor's comments and then the city council comments. The council will take what they've heard here, so that you'll probably comment back on what you've presented to them. I encourage you to step towards the end of the agenda, that is, the way down here. So we don't talk till the meetings are way of business anyway. But it's important to know that this public comment period was added in January. Before January of this year, there was no public comment on these city agendas. We find this crucial, just not just in part of being serious, where you can come and give us the feedback that we need in order to govern correctly. And so thank you for taking the time out to be with us. We may not always agree on everything, but we hear each other because we all live in one community. So I appreciate it. This is early on in the stages. The council's going to have comments later on about this. I know I will have a couple of comments to make. And again, if you're new to the meeting, please sign in at the back. We'd love to know that you're here with us. This is a wonderful engagement piece. At this time, I want to move from the fellow comments on open a public hearing. Quest applicant Nathan Smith. Can I tell? Love it.
Good evening, the air nervous, the council. Mayor, would you like the applicant to see if he wears before standing in your presentation?
So my name is Nathan Smith, one oh six Kimberly Road, Canton, Georgia. I'm here representing Amsteel LLC. Excuse me. We're requesting a special use permit for light steel fabrication over on Confederate Ave. Essentially, what we do is we take prefabricated steel parts, weld them or bolt them together to create structural steel materials used in commercial buildings. So columns, beams, that sort of thing. Just to clarify, we don't melt molten hot steel and clip them in big caps or anything. We're mainly just assembling it. So this is a great property for us, and thank you for your time and ask for your consideration.
Thanks, sir. Staff, anyone else?
All right. So, Mayor, council, so you just heard from Mr. Smith. He's a principal of Amsteel. And they are here requesting a special use permit to allow for a machine shop where light steel fabrication has property located at two two nine Confederate Avenue. So kind of overview of the site. The subject property is located within the Mountain City Business Park, which is just south and east of the ballpark. It is a C-two general commercial and is approximately one and a quarter acres in size. The Mountain City Business Park is served by city water and sewer. And the subject property is accessed from Confederate Avenue, which is sort of the spine rows there in Business Park. So a bit more in the site context from the ground, to the northwest and south, we have properties, so the C-two general commercial, that are utilized for other similar office, warehouse, manufacturing type uses. And then to the east, there is an undeveloped property, zone C-two general. So this is a picture of the existing building on the property. It's about seven thousand square feet, and it previously accommodated Onex, which was an awning manufacturer's company. Amsteel has been actively searching for this building since last September. Their principals are actually currently working out of their personal homes. So they are very excited, the opportunity to find a home here in Jasper. Mr. Smith informed staff that it's actually really difficult to find a building out of this five thousand to ten thousand square foot range that has three-phase power, which is something that will benefit Amsteel and their type of use. Where they have some of this welding equipment and heavy machinery that is a little bit more power intensive. It also benefits Amsteel because to some of our welding shops, our Home Depot, the access that we have on Highway five fifteen, and our construction rental services here in Jasper that will help them when they do their install in the field. So Amsteel specializes in the design, fabrication, and erection of structural steel building supports. They support your use within commercial and industrial settings. And what they'll specifically be doing at this facility is welding pre-cut steel beams to base plates. As you can see there on the lower image, or fasteners that will tighten into the ceiling. You know, in the C-two districts, since this can accommodate sort of a variety of these commercial type uses, we want to make sure that this use is compatible with the area. As I mentioned, the business park does accommodate other types of manufacturing, auto-repaired uses that are moderately intense. So with the special use permit, we're just vetting that this specific use is appropriate for the area. I've spoken extensively with Mr. Smith, and he's confirmed that this use will not have any adverse impacts on the ambient conditions in the area in terms of not producing any sort of glare, heat, smoke, or anything like that. It will be very self-contained in the existing building. So when we analyze special use permit requests, we look to our comprehensive plan, which definitely makes this property as part of the Jasper arterial commercial corridor. This corridor is, this proposal is consistent with this land use designation because it will keep this moderately intense commercially used in sort of a well insulated commercial area that is adequately separated from any nearby residential uses. In addition, you know, with the ongoing water and sewer temporary suspension, you know, this use will not require really any water beyond its employee restrooms and restroom facilities. So with that, staff recommends approval of the request, and the claim commission recommended unanimous approval of the request at their meeting on the fourth. So approval recommendation is subject to condition, including sort of defining that the special use is limited to the machine shop or light steel fabrication, that no painting or chemical treating can occur without a paint department that is approved by the city, that the storage, any outdoor storage, for example, of pre-cut beams, would be enclosed and screened from public view, that the employee parking area that sits in front of the building would be restripped with ADN parking provided, that a business license is required, which Mr. Smith has already applied for, that signing is approved by the city, and then just that standard stipulation, you see how they acknowledge the ongoing suspension, and that this approval of creative does not guarantee future capacity if their operation were to kind of change or become more wide. So with that, I have answered any questions.
Counsel, any questions of staff before the public? You ready?
If I just may add one, one item elegant touch on that they have applied for business license. A lot of these resumings and SUP requirements actually start when they apply for the building license. And so no assumptions have been made that a building, or I'm sorry, a business license, it is obviously bound to be approved. But that's usually where most of our requests start. And then we say, oh, this use has to be tolerated and stuff. No presumptions made on any of those five.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions of staff? Thank you. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak on this item?
It's very grateful, people.
All right. From the on, from twice, and I'll pass all the public here. At this time, I'll close the public here, it's better. Counsel, next on your agenda is the consent agenda. You'll pursue a motion.
That motion can say that can be approved.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
I would say. Thank you, counsel. Moving on to new business. Number one, consideration approval of farm days of yesteryear event. Still in the middle of the meeting.
Yes, thank you, the evening, Mayor, council. So some of you may be familiar with the Georgia Antique Engine Club annual farm days of yesteryear event that occurs in Lee Newton Park up in the grassy area. This draws great crowds. I actually looked back on Facebook to see some of Mary Lipsy's pictures from previous events, and it, it was surprising to see how many people were attending previous events with a variety of equipment, tractors, things like that, that they have at these. It is a great educational event, and it is a reflection of our history. So we have Mr. Allen Proudfoot here this evening from the Georgia Antique Engine Club. He is available to answer any questions. The event is proposed for September the eighteenth through the twenty-first. And so we would ask for council's approval for them to be able to hold this annual event once again.
Anything you'd like to add to that, sir?
No, sir, like I said, I'd like to look there.
Oh, you're fine.
So listen, we are fortieth annual. And actually, we do try to draw a big crowd, not just of displayers, but participants, you know, customers. It helps out too with the farmers market. Because I, when I advertise, I advertise nationwide for this. We have people coming from other states for this. Usually, we set up on Thursday, we're gone by Sunday, and we, you know, clean the place, even though you all supply, you know, help. It's free to the public, you know, both displaying and to view it. It isn't, we consider it educational, I beg. We have equipment running. We do have insurance for it. We have equipment running to demonstrate and explain to anyone, especially hopefully children, you know, what it does and what it can and what it could be doing. Again, we do have, like, some food vendors on site, and we do have people selling stuff, but we don't, you know, it's not for a profit kind of thing. It's basically a hobby we do to get together. You said fortieth? Fortieth, yes, sir. We first started off at, the first annual was actually at the old City Park, which now Duck Pond, as I've been told. I've only been in Jasper twenty-one years. So when I first came, it was at Lee Newton. I've been going to it ever since. We've only had one time, technically it's the fortieth, but during COVID, we had to cancel it, you know, that one year. But majority of it has been in Lee Newton Park. Like I said, we started at City Park and then moved to Lee Newton. I don't remember when, you know, before my dad. Yeah, it's our fortieth annual. We, like I said, we have people from North Carolina, Georgia, Florida, Alabama, Tennessee, any further that come to display the stuff. I said, we have antique tractors, other farm equipment, antique washing machines. Usually around one o'clock, we got the tractor parade that goes around. Usually on Friday, or usually on Saturday, not so much Friday. Friday is a slower day. Saturday is usually the busiest day.
So the tractor parade is what I thought. Not what I googled, but it is. It's, it's, you can see how the children are enjoying themselves. So we would ask for your consideration and approve.
Thank you, please, sir. Counsel, you give the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve request.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
I would say. And sir, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you for kind of receiving that question today.
I have taken consideration approval of Show and Shine Jeep Fest, Miss Goldner.
Yes. So unfortunately, I do not have an application for this event just yet. We're working with the Sheriff's Department and the auxiliary to get that in. But I do have Sheriff Craig, I believe, this evening.
Which, uh...
So, you know, Jeep Fest, you think Jeeps trails a lot of mud. A lot of people think mud. But it is completely about the children in our community and the organizations that help our children here in this community. Show and shine, which is kind of the feature event where you can showcase Jeeps and listen to live music. And there are vendors and food, and everyone has a great time. That is what Sheriff Craig is here for this evening. That this is the event that happens to occur here downtown Jasper. This is a big event. We do end up closing Main Street typically at three o'clock in the afternoon, and then the intersection of Main and State Road fifty-three, which requires an apartment. And then the intersection of Main and State Road fifty-three, which requires an apartment. The police department is in the process of working with the sheriff's department to get that. Uh, that will close at five. And so there is, you know, a, a big deal downtown until about eleven or so, once everything is cleaned up. And so we would ask for council's approval on having Show and Shine here once again. And Sheriff Craig, I don't know if there's anything that I missed that you'd like to add?
No, just uh, it feels like it's been forty years.
What year is this, Sheriff?
Forty, so it's the eighth year that we've done it. You know, we decided when we first started coming into Jasper, it's a great opportunity, I think, to bring uh the folks that attend Jeep Fest to downtown Jasper. Well, I think it's great for business, it's great for the community and, you know, we appreciate the partnership we've had with the city over the years and in this event, and yet for coming back to us.
It's all good for business, it is good for our community, several wanted us good for the kids. And ladies and gentlemen, when you hear about organizations that are giving back to your youth, you people of different of the Jeep Fest and those organizations that they're supporting, those are your local children that live here as your community. It does not leave your dreams, Sheriff, second.
Sure.
And I believe I cut you off there, partner. Yes, I'm saying?
Tell us about this raffle. I want to know how many tickets you're going to get away. Can you win both vehicles? Cause I, you know, I'm trying to adjust some space for the.
I don't know, it's a raffle, it's a raffle now, just three thousand and there will be uh two, three thousand tickets sold. Uh, you'll have your choice of either Jeep and all those proceeds will go back to the benefit of children. Each count.
Just a little of the business.
Well, we hope to have it at the, the Show and Shine event, you'll be raffling off. We uh, we love to help approach this downtown on, uh, make sure that it uh, let us know already. Or display and so on, some tickets, sorry.
Awesome.
We're gonna start getting that, kind of showing that off and he got us right out, feed those little women. Careful. Thanks to uh, upon the blue side and the folks of the Jasper community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, you're the full for motion, counsel?
Make a motion that would approve the Show and Shine downtown.
Motion about a second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Uh.
Those say? Thank you, counsel. Counsel, consideration approval of Jeep Fest camp?
Yes, so this kind of goes to the event being with the previous request. Uh, North Georgia Family Partners is traditionally hosted or kind of police, um, the camping at Lee Newton Park that occurs during Jeep Fest. Um, there are multiple places to camp, but the Newton Park seems to be a very popular place as well. North Georgia Family Partners, you know, which is an organization that is local here to our community that focuses on nurturing the home environment. And so it is another organization that works very closely with our children, with their families to make sure that they have everything that they need to have a positive start in life. And so this is a big fundraiser for them as well to be able to carry out their mission. Uh, I believe Jim Ash is here. She is not. We shot up our intro director. Okay, excellent. Says she is not here.
Time to sit down on the board chair.
Okay, excellent. Is there anything that you'd like to add that I'm not?
Uh, you did a beautiful job. I would say that we are asking for all of Lee Newton, which includes the Right Share as well. We, those are spots that we have a, um, a very big Jeep company that comes. They bring, um, like, they spend months a week. They have about eight families that, that are at least there. Um, about forty people. The families spend anywhere from two thousand to three thousand a piece. So they bring a lot of money into, um, into our community. So last year we weren't given those spots and that particular company was displaced. Um, they were, they were kind and okay with it, but they told us that that really is kind of where they want to be. So we would hate to lose them. I think the community would want to lose them. So we would just ask that the entire, that we would get that back to the ownership.
So that's something that we will have to work with the farmer's market who has already been a pretty poor use of the easternmost parking lot there. Um, I believe that the other side across the creek where the Veterans Memorial would be available. So I don't know if that is an option for you. We can certainly talk with the farmer's market and see what they might be available. But I know, I think I saw an advertisement that they are planning on being in operation during Jeep Fest as well. So let, let's get you approved tonight and then let's work with the farmer's market and see what we can do. If that will work for chemistry.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, yes, Ms. Goldner is correct. Uh, so the farmer's market, that's what we were just discussing is the approval of the farmer's market schedule. Uh, was approved earlier in the year for what I have on my agenda. I'll use this for the record as A, B, and C. Um, item A or location A is the easternmost parking lot. B is where Veterans Memorial Park is, and C is the grassy area of the park. Um, the farmer's market schedule does include this weekend for the use of area A. Uh, I think that's what we ran into last year was that area. So what I'll do is, uh, counsel, I'm good to go before for motion to approve the event pending, uh, working the two minutes, the, the administration to determine what they're going to do.
You know, motion that Craig be approved?
Have a motion, I was like.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel?
Yes, I have one. Um, I just want to let you know too, I spoke with Kelly Jordan last week and she talked to me about power. Uh, our city crews have done a great job of building some of the power down into the park. So there's other tools with power and water, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. And I just want to bring up that, cause I know we talked about that, cause I know we left the farmer's parking lot for Fourth of July, Fourth of July, Royal Festival, and I thought it was this one as well. Can I go back and check that? Yes, I can certainly look. Um, the farmer's market moves, you know, they, they move during Fourth of July. So they're uh kind of closer to the batteries, quite honestly. Um, I think the only weekend that they are not there, um, as I recall from their application, was Royal Festival Weekend.
Based on their schedule?
Based on their schedule.
Let's go back and look.
I can certainly go back and look though, yes.
That's around here, maybe February, March. It was pretty early on this year. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, sir.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have number four, consideration for special use permits.
He's still in.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So as a reminder, this is a request by applicant Nathan Smith of Ansteel for a special use permit to allow for a machine shop for light steel fabrication at two-two-nine in private avenue. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to conditions. And planning commission also recommended unanimous approval of the request, subject to staff's recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions for staff, anybody with the applicant who's present?
Second. My famous question, yeah. My famous question, Mr. Smith, do you understand the conditions that expect them?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, you give the full affirmative motion.
Take a motion to.
Don't wait.
Take a motion, the uh, uh, that we approve a special permit for Hutch LLC.
Have a motion about a second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, sir? I have number five, consideration approval of downtown development authorities protocol for vendors. This car like wasn't in the baby car.
Change. Change. How to just be young.
Hey, ma'am, counsel, as um, was discussed at the work session, the downtown development authority board voted unanimously at the June twenty-third meeting to approve this system. Um, just to create, uh, kind of ratify the formal system of vendor selection for downtown live and downtown development authority, um, hosted events. Um, I believe you both, you all have the um, printout from the story and the action form in front of you. Basically, um, Jasper's businesses that are in the central business district get first priority. A Jasper business with a DDA boundary, which is the entirety of the Jasper city limits, is second. A Higgins County business would be third, and then if there is no duplication, specifically with most concern to a brick and mortar business on Main Street, out of, um, out of county businesses will be allowed as vendors. Specifically, um, what this would mean is a, no other vendor of the general type is present. So the goal is not to duplicate others that a vendor that would compete with a brick and mortar on Main Street. While we will not monitor an itemized list of what each vendor is bringing in, it is for a general, a general business type, as in we would, um, not duplicate the same type of restaurant. Not two entirely separate types of restaurants, that both might happen. You have some variation of french fries on their menu, just not the same general types. Um, as I said, the vote to for this was unanimous by the DDA board at the Gimply.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, uh, this proposed adoption or the acceptance system is one way to uh protect and serve our local businesses, the city businesses, the Higgins County businesses. Um, so one of the best is we have DDA member, old counsel, Dr. Proctor, do you have any comments on this, sir?
No, sir, it's just a way of count focusing. All right.
The blood.
The blood downtown and expanded it up farther as we need.
Thank you.
Give the full affirmative motion.
Make a motion that we accept the DDA recommendation as here.
Motion about a second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel?
Yeah, just one. Um, do we have vendors lined up on the, at our doorstep trying to join in?
Oh, we do have vendors from outside the area, so.
Yeah, we're kind of full at the moment. People are still wanting to come in and we're kind of out of room, so yeah.
Do we need to add any kind of time commitments?
Anything to ease the prioritization and like the tiers or?
So we have time constraints already on our applications of both. And I would like to make a comment with the last two, particularly the last event, uh, true evidence more on us. And uh, with the, with the layout, but also with carly's trucks where we can hone down more on how the application process is working. We still have people that um, don't show up in the Sunday will, usually those on weekends where with all those things. Um, I think the last couple of pets that have seen a fast improvement. We have another bit coming up.
The sweet times.
Yeah. As a general rule, there, I mean, there is um, very specific instructions for what time vendors arrive, which happens in this rag first. Food trucks come in before ten vendors. There are specific allocations for sponsors that are separate from this. That's an entirely, these are just for the vendors coming in. It's still kind of food and they take it to a sponsor. Um, and then they are expected to stay for the duration of the event and then to have their equipment off Main Street in time for city to shut down. The all the vendors are aware of this coming.
Thank you. Ready?
Any further?
It's like we have a right on them, so then the clear cups, there was a lot of that that in, uh, so.
Yes, there was actually, you must have got today about that if um, cans are to be brought um by vendors, the can must be emptied into a sixteen ounce clear plastic cup. Uh, the customer cannot walk away with the can per the Jasper alcohol ordinance. That was actually, you know, said today, it will be sent three more times before Saturday. Thank you.
Any further comments? More seconds, any further discussion, all in favor?
Uh, sure.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, so.
I have number six, provide a fire part media update. Chief Share, you are somewhere right here, sir. Uh, could your crew find their ways in here somewhere?
We're all stacked up outside.
What's uh, if the crew can find their way in here, we'd love to see you and say hello, so come in and join us.
Just a second.
Where's he? Second. He says, he looks.
He's easy.
My town.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Doc K, for breaking this evening and uh, providing updates and information about what we've got going on in city Jasper. It's been an eventful uh, first half of the year so far. Um, so we go into a little bit about what we've been doing, the track we've been all the concussion and uh, got an announcement two boards at the end of that. So I'll jump right in.
See you. I can see.
Uh, so so far this year, what we've been doing is putting emphasis on technical rescue training. Uh, we have to maintain existing training we have, in other words. We train a firefighter to firefighter at one level. Uh, we have to keep training on those skills to make sure we're proficient. And then we add a new skill like technical rescue. Uh, there's four different disciplines of technical rescue, rope, confined space, trench, structural collapse. So when you add those components, you add more training. Our federal training goal, or our basic training standard in city Jasper is two hundred and forty hours of training a year. Uh, and that, that aligns with ISO standards as well. That's the reason that numbers there. And that, that training makes up a lot of different aspects. But for example, um, our fire marshal, who's an investigator and inspector, as well as our assistant chief, they both have to go to additional training outside of that. So each one of those certifications maintain those is additional forty hours on top of that. Uh, so that just kind of gives you an idea of the, the training that we're doing and the standards that we're meeting and what we're doing to keep moving forward, provide a better service, but quality service, to be able to expand the capabilities of the department. Uh, so right now, our focus is rope rescue, which we've, we've about maxed out there as far as getting everybody trained that needs to be trained. Uh, but then we are moving in confined space. We have some people go into the state to get completed, get their uh certification, confined space rescue. We're also uh scheduled in the future, we're going to work on trench and structural collapse. You may say, why that order, why is that on there? Is it just one prioritizer to the other than they are? Um, rope rescue is the foundation for a lot of other technical skills, a lot of the knots and systems and equipment you use go into that. Um, and then when you move into confined space rescue, you prefer that have different discipline, different, different aspect to the rescue. Uh, so those are the first two we work on. I say rope, we're through, confined space, we're working on. Then we'll move on to trench rescue and structural collapse. The reason that's ordered that way is obviously, you know, this council is working hard as well as staff to address infrastructure issues. So we're going to have a lot of fit for confined spaces, uh trenches and things like that. So we need to be prepared to address that as well as not only for our city staff or our contractors that are coming in and working in our area. Uh, so that's the reason for that order. Uh, we've also been building our EMS capabilities up. All of our frontline vehicles are licensed EMS units with extension vision booty. Uh, and what that means is, is all of our apparatus are guaranteed a certain level of care and the individual that's operating that own that has a certain level of licensure for EMS. Uh, but in other words, we don't have anything that does not have at least an advance to give to y'all there. Uh, next step, step of vote, that is fair bet. Uh, you know, our fair bet, if you're gonna raise your hand, if you're a fair bet. So out of the six, you got here to get three fair bets. Shoot, four, four. So, uh, we're maintaining, our goal is to provide a better level of care, not just the standard, but provide exceptional care. And that's what we're working towards. Uh, in addition to those licensed vehicles, the frontline suppression apparatus is also my vehicle because I'm an advanced DMT as well as assistant chief in all. The reason we do that is in case we have multiple calls out and all of our apparatus are tied up, we can still provide that same level of care. We don't want anybody to have a delayed service or for anything as far as what they do, what they call it, out of the wood. We will be there quick, provide a quality service every time. So in order to do that, we have to have the training, obviously, which we worked on, technical rescue, EMS, EMS is, yep. Full four right now, everything's going fine. We've built all our training benchmarks, benchmarks. We've got the equipment we need. We're moving forward there, doing a great job of it. Our staff has done an excellent job as far as transitioning to doing multiple reports, CPCRs, doing things that we were not doing previously, uh, being not, not licensed agencies. So now they've got the EMS license that they've all transitioned very well and did a great job of fitting everything we need to this department to help, make sure we're staying polite, offering quality service. Um, now, equipment as well, when it comes to technical rescue, there's two components there. There's one, the personnel and the training that they receive, but we have to have the equipment to match it. So what we've been doing is gradually, um, annually purchasing equipment in small amounts to try to build up. That way we don't have a big impact to our budget uh at one time. So we're working that and doing a replacement program. We do that with a lot of other stuff too, such as our SCBA's, our thermal imaging cameras, things that are expensive that we need to replace on an annual projected basis. That way it's not a large impact on our budget. Um, we can focus and we do those annual replacement programs, replacing gradually and maintaining that service equipment. Also, another reason, another thing that helps us there is when we do that, it prevents us from, we'll say we bought all DTE airbags at one time. Right now, those airbags run four thousand dollars plus a piece. The cylinders are still on the back end, we have to have two per, they run about twelve hundred dollars right now a piece. The last thing you want to do is have to replace DTE at one time. What we do is we do four a year. That replaces all the ones on one apparatus and that keeps us with a nice rotation. We've got, we've got pieces that are across different years, not whether or not all expire at once, but in essence. Um, rope rescue equipment, for acquiring those things, uh, we are close and ready to go there. We're efficient. We have responded to technical rescue rope incidents um in city cabin. Uh, also confined space rescue equipment, we're in the process, we've already acquired a lot of what we need, which saw that we successfully executed confined space rescue last year. Um, and then we're still working to get the last couple of things we need, a couple items. Uh, once we get the training, then the trench and structural collapse is followed behind that. All right. Total listens for this year, and this is the first six months of the year, um, four thousand one hundred and eight. And that, that's a little blow. Last year we had. And that, that's a little blow. Last year we had probably five hundred calls in there. Uh, so we're a little bit smaller, but also, uh, Pickens County Fire Nation has picked up some of the incorporated areas that we used to cover primarily. So they've taken over those and, uh, we're not having to respond to those areas as much now, so that pulls that number down a little bit. So we're still overall increasing call volume. We just keep restarting our service a little bit there. Uh, where Pickens took over some of the incorporated areas that we've been serving for a couple, past several decades. So as you can see here, it's breakdown of calls. Uh, fire calls are not seeing that many. That's about four point two four percent, which isn't a lot. Um, but at the same time, that's a very high risk incident, so we have to train for a lot and prepare for it. Um, as you see, the vast majority is put some glue right there. That's going to be Rescue University Medical Services. Uh, that, anything from confined space rescue to EMS calls to car accident, somebody trapped, that comes to the lot that field. Um, this is also one of the driving factors for us obtaining EMS license to provide that little period we need to. All right, overlapping calls, that's something that we've been working hard to, to be able to manage and handle. You can see on that bottom figure, there's three hundred and ninety-seven. That's three hundred and ninety-seven calls that we have more than one call building on at one time. Um, and for us, right now, if we go to open station fourteen, we'll have three apparatus in service. A lot of these will have at least three calls at one time, if not four. Obviously, if we have four calls at one time, that can be a problem. We have three in service apparatus, but that's also why I have myself in chief, more than just car vehicles license. Uh, because while he's calling EMS calls, so looking at where I would pick up and handle those calls. Um, now, all the training, all the education, uh, bolstering equipment, uh, doing things the right way, documentation, that all leads to improvements that the department is told. So in two thousand and eighteen, we had our last ISO evaluation and it was, came back as we were a five-five X to the five-five Y. So that's a, that's a number five there. That scale goes from zero to a hundred and there's five point five bonus points you get on the scale. Uh, think of it like a grading scale in school where an A would be a one and then you get two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten is no recognized fire protection. Uh, now that being said, unlike school, if you get, you know, uh, what if you have three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, you're not, it's not failing great by any means. It's a very good grade. So if anything above, I would say a five is good. And, and we were a five before, so that was good. We're a solid department. Uh, but we've done a lot of change, a lot of work, uh, and we've improved that. Some of that is through training, as you see here, the code, this is technical rescue training, we perform, Dr. Waterfall. It's the only place that we have that we could actually do this training. Uh, we've also done some other stuff, we've got sort of the police departments, interagency stuff, um, and we've used it past. We also have used, uh, Vic Canoe's facility to do a lot of burn track, a lot of fire training, which you did. But adding all that up, our new number now is a class three. Um, that. Now, put that in perspective, kind of in this, what kind of a group we are, um, I'll go a little further. Moving on the fly here. So before we, we've got fifty-four point zero eight points.
Percent rate that it's not.
It's on the floor.
What's that?
Yeah, it's a cool one.
We not get it.
At least I got to see their faces.
What do you guys see? All right, so I'll go through the numbers a little bit. Yes, wait, since I go slow, there'll be a few questions. Uh, so our last four, the total points were fifty-four point zero eight points. That put us solidly a five range. Um, now our, our total points were seventy-four point two seven. Uh, I felt confident going into this process that, that we would be able to obtain a four without a problem. Uh, three, I was not sure because I wasn't sure where we were going to land on, on the water side of communications exactly. Uh, but surprisingly, we actually gained points in water. Um, we originally had twenty-five points in water out of the hundred and went up to twenty-nine point one four. So we increased there, um, we also increased on the fire department side. We went from twenty points on fire department, twenty points out of fifty to thirty-three point five eight. Uh, now, the water and fire department are the biggest categories in this. Fire is fifty, fifty points and then water department is forty points out of, so merchant communications is ten points. And we're doing good there. We've got eight point zero nine, so we do good. Uh, and the meterage reduction, which is what fire marshal does as far as inspections, uh, investigations, that's about five point five points, we got four point six out there. Now, what they have is they have something called a divergent factor. Uh, so previously, the divergent factor caused us some issues because what they look at is they look at your fire department and your water points. And they say, if you have a phenomenal water system, but your fire department is not phenomenal as well, then it would be a divergent factor where they subtract and say, well, even though you've got this great water system, you can't perform, but you can't perform to the level that it's rated at because the fire department can't utilize it. That makes sense. Uh, it's just a hypothetical there, but our divergent factor was, was upper four, was subtracting previously. It's time to have the one point one four because the fire and water come pretty close together as far as the, the percentages of the score and they both came alive and that dealt us out definitively. Uh, we have looked through this and we have found some areas where we believe we can still improve. Um, and now, you know, my original goal, when y'all brought me a board, was, was to get us to a three. That's where I felt we needed to be. Uh, we've accomplished that, so now it's time to figure out how to get to a two. So we'll keep moving forward and we will attempt to do that. Um, and we see a, a clear path. I wish it would show up on the screen or some reason it's not, but, um, uh, we see clear path through training, education, uh, to get there. Training, a big part of that is facilities training and that is doing training at a designated training location. Uh, we don't have those facilities and that's why we, we asked about facilities that previous meeting. Um, but having those facilities and them built out are correctly, are proper ones to rent. Uh, also, uh, utilization of those facilities without having the burn building and things like that that we would need, uh, we can't utilize them. And that's the biggest way as far as training points go. So being able to, to improve in that area will, will help us get to our starting goal. Uh, also, I want to kind of mention about what ISO is as a whole. ISO is, is, it's a national standard sort of, but it is a private company that is paid for by insurance companies that rates your property, uh, based on the ability of the fire department to suppress fires. That, that's what it is. Uh, it is not a go ban, it's year eight, like that, so I want you to think that. But it does directly impact your homeowner's insurance premiums, your commercial properties. The importance of us getting to a three is when we get to a three, you start seeing big savings as far as on the commercial side. Well, I'm backing up. Say big savings because I don't want to put anything into your insurance age to mount or, or, or guarantee anything to them. But you do see a market savings in commercial property and it has a definite impact on your homeowners as well, uh, the rate you pay. Now, our rating will go into effect October one, so it does not officially go into effect, but it is complete, the rating is there and they've finalized everything. So October one is when our rating will go into effect. Uh, but like I said, it's, it's a big determining factor. I'll bring it up to different insurance agents. Here, your son say, hey, it's not as big a deal as it used to be. The other side is still a big factor. So it really depends on your insurance agent, uh, of what carrier you have, so it can be a difference in. Electors have any questions for me regarding our numbers, our presentation?
Counsel?
Only comment. Congratulations. Thank you.
Bless to you. On a bear.
It's all cheese.
But it was all them. They have to put in the training hours. They have to do the worst of it all.
But the leadership also shows and we appreciate the work.
Okay.
How you feeling, sir?
All finger.
Crew, before you leave, thank you for setting a new standard and a chance for fight. You are a something that has never been done before and it's because of your hard work and your dedication. I appreciate you greatly. Um, could I have the captains and assistant chief please stand in the back?
It's not the highest.
And my favorite saying is, uh, you have a college of knots, right?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we've been through the wringer here and this department, but three of you plus chief, um, leading the charge on this, you're setting a new path. And again, just like I told the crew, you've done something that's not been done before in the city of Jasper. And I appreciate your dedication. Some of you are a little newer than others here, so don't get in here long, I mean. And it's exciting to see that the change that we had at this department, rare enough, what the amazing thing this is for our community to go from a five to the three. Um, I mean, literally, all this chief showed up on the front door one day and said, I need to tell you something. Here's our four present. My job, I hit the grave.
Let's see, how you feel, your head?
I was excited enough to be inside. I'm very grateful for the four of you that are leading the charge. But I'm also thankful for those of you on the frontline leading the way, gave a single call, gave a single that. Thank you.
And Jeff.
Congrats, electors. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna all stand here and hold it. Thank you, Mr. Trump. Item number seven, discussion resolution, Macon Biff County Housing Authority, Mr. Douglas, one with me, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, and, uh, just want to, now, Chief Share, before we get into that, did, uh, any of the guys know, uh, these guys standing here, did they know they were going to be recognized for helping us get to a three tonight?
They didn't know they were going to be recognized, but I told them before we came to the door that, that what the rating was going to be. Get the hell out.
So, uh, just wanted to, uh, bring to your attention on the agenda, uh, you may recall at the June twenty-sixth, uh, work session, uh, we had a gentleman here who would give a presentation, uh, Mr. Seifan as our city attorney had received, uh, an email from, uh, an attorney from Macon Biff County Housing Department. Now, you all may be wondering, we're not Macon Biff County. What are they doing asking us to do a resolution? Glad you asked. So what happened is there's a, a, a private development of about forty units, one hundred Brooks Hollow Drive, where a private entity owns these forty units, has no affiliation with housing, it's just this private entity owned. Apparently, there's a dozen or so properties they own throughout the state of Georgia. They partnered with Macon Biff County Housing Authority as essentially a conduit lending of sorts to issue bonds to help make improvements on their property. Uh, this Macon, Macon Biff County attorney had reached out to the Jasper Housing Authority first to essentially say, A, this is not a housing authority project. However, the private entity has partnered with Macon Biff throughout the state. There's property in the city of Jasper that this private entity owns. They want to leverage some bond monies that they're getting for these other thirteen properties. But procedurally, we just can't come into your jurisdiction and do some sort of debt issuance, even though it has no affiliation with your housing authority or the city of. So Mr. Seifan had vetted with his attorney that they did, in fact, the Jasper Housing Authority has adopted a resolution. Uh, therefore, they asked to, uh, have consideration for counsel to have a public hearing, uh, as one of the procedural elements. Uh, we asked, we asked, they came and did a public hearing. Um, I believe they had already reached out to the development department to ensure that there's proper permitting that's being done for the exterior and interior renovations. So far be it for us to, at the staff level, to say, hey, there are going to be major improvements on these private properties. Uh, get out of here. Rather, we say, hey, thanks for coming in, doing the investment. And by virtue of that, uh, it's on your agenda tonight to just consider a resolution that would essentially be the last remaining procedural aspect of allowing Macon Biff County to be the conduit debt for this private entity, um, to do the necessary. So Seifan, that is not a legal presentation. That's a layperson. So if I missed anything, please correct.
No, I think you covered it.
Thank you, sir. Um, counsel, the resolution isn't before you. There's an exhibit A, list of properties on the form of record. Uh, item number eleven is Brooks Hollow, one hundred Brooks Hollow Drive in Jasper, within Pickens County. Uh, it's number nine is Oak Lane and it lists three forty-four Martin and fifteen Junior Boulevard. It says Jasper and Elbert County. That is that there. And so I will just call it as that is probably a tougher to enjoy it. That is not, uh, applicable to us. We are on item of eleven for Brooks Hollow for this resolution. This time yields a full motion.
So much.
Make the motion.
I have a second.
Any other counsel?
I like it.
All in favor?
About.
I don't say.
Speaking naturally.
You blessed.
Item number eight, consideration resolution, requesting decision. Geo's class debts, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor, counsel. Uh, you may recall the June second meeting, uh, we had, uh, solicited y'all's template in terms of providing a list of potential squash projects to the county. Uh, it is the intent of Pickens County to, uh, float a referendum, uh, in November of this year, uh, to do a five-year, uh, squash. As part of the referendum language, uh, it is consistent, as with the twenty-twenty squash and most jurisdictions, they float additional language on the referendum that enables jurisdictions to issue general obligation debt, uh, so as to frontload projects. So, uh, for instance, uh, we would yield about eighty or ninety thousand dollars a month of collection. Uh, it can take quite some time to get a lot of money to do a million dollar pipe project. So the idea is, what's before you is a resolution that's consistent with the county. Uh, Chairman Stansfield and the attorney had provided some information to Mr. Seifan to review. All is improper legal, um, it is nothing that, uh, ties you or binds you. Uh, it is just an opportunity that the language on the referendum would be such that it allows for. Uh, and what that means is the term of the, uh, squash of five years, we get in twenty-twenty-six. If voters were to approve it, uh, you could essentially then issue general obligation debt, which is just merely something that you can pledge squash monies to for future debt service on that. So then that way, instead of us having to wait until twenty thirty-one to have accumulated millions of dollars to do a project, you could in effect say, hey, here's a shovel ready project. That's going to cost three million and a half, three million, whatever. You could frontload it with the Geo bonds, pledge the money to pay it and then it's paid in full at the term of the squash. So again, I'll take my word for it, legal.
Beginning of the P C R.
This is our, my copy.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, you have a full motion. Called on your resolution, two thousand point five thousand zero.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five and a short.
Motion, I have to say.
Check.
Any discussion, counsel? Uh, Mr. Douglas, before we do move on, um, to the squash referendum you've mentioned, uh, approximately what percentage of our squash allocations will go towards water and waste water for our infrastructure?
So of the, so percentages, you may mislead. So it's, we have at the staff level and counselor with you all that give it two thirds. But what does that really mean is of the seven point two million projected, it's almost four and a half million towards, um, water sources.
Is that?
For the city's squash, right?
I mean, yes, unfortunately.
Any further discussion, counsel?
All in favor?
Close sign. Thank you, counsel. Item number nine, consideration contractor work for Park Park Phase One, his goal.
Yes. Good evening again. I'll wait in here just a moment and see if I can get this to work because I have lots of numbers and I will probably flub them while I'm reading them, so I would feel better if I could get them up on the screen so that everyone could follow them up.
Go, go.
Finger shells.
We got it up here.
Well, um, hmm, that's the shit is going. Well, I guess I'm just going to have to read very carefully. Uh, so as you know, Pro Park was out for bid, uh, most of the month of June. We did have the bid opening on June the twenty-sixth. We had five packages come in. I would like to read all of them because there is a fairly wide range between bids. Diversified Construction of Georgia was three million, eleven thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty-three. Magnum Contracting, two million, three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Complete Site LLC, two million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. JHC Corporation, three million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars even. And then S H Creel Contracting came in at two million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Local Contractor Magnum Contracting is concurrent low bidder. Local Contractor, Magnum Contracting is apparent low bidder. They are based here in Jasper off of 108 in the, I believe it's Mount Venus Park. I do wanna remind folks that this project is being funded through a million-dollar ARC grant that the city was awarded. And then the other portion, the matching portion, is coming from squash funding. There is no general funds being allocated to this project. GMC has looked at the bids, they have evaluated everything, and they recommend that we accept Magnum's bid at the two million, three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. However, they have also recommended and are in the process of setting up a meeting with Magnum this week or next to look at some areas that we may be able to value engineer, meaning that there are some things, there were some bid alternates that were included in the project. And if we look at those things individually, carve them out, and maybe look at a different way of doing them, scaling them down, something like that. There may be some cost savings that the city can experience through that as well. And so, counsel, what we are asking this evening is for you to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents that are related to the contract, contingent of legal, and the city manager office's review of the contract documents as we start reviewing those.
Thank you, ma'am.
Happy to answer your questions.
Other way, questions, I'm staying. entertain a motion, give the floor.
I'd like to make this motion.
I have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the award to contract for Phase One at Brother Park, Macon, low bidder. I like second, sir.
Motion, right, second. Yes, I do. Do we need discussion, counsel?
Do we need to add language in about the mayor to executing them all documents?
I think.
Is that in your motion?
I certainly can add that.
Any other documents being executed by the mayor, any legal approval?
Yes.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Other side?
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Squash, squash, nice.
Number ten, consideration, this mid-year 2025, I made your question. Ms. Lindsay Williams, there you are. Welcome.
We'd love to work.
May I ask you, there, counsel? So tonight, I'm bringing for you the mid-year 2025, I said it in minutes. These were included in your packet, so the June 36th work session for review. I found through the admin committee as well. And I believe Mr. Douglas sent out an email.
For the book?
For our review. So staff is just thinking of third of the, but to the mid-year budget of minutes.
I should start calling them, big.
And to.
You gotta turn it off.
Counsel, you have a motion. Just lost it. Counsel, you have a full for motion. My motion that we're probably approved.
Well.
Or amended above. The year budget methods.
We got like five change starts.
Motion, right, second.
Second.
First of all, you're trying to get that because I think we're all three of y'all. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Other side? Thank you, counsel. Just thank you, thank you, my son. Item number eleven, consideration, number four for GFA Sanitary Sewer Collection System Rehab. Project, Miss Dolby, another project.
Logan.
Infrastructure rehab.
Yes, and so my computer's not doing cooperation, so I'll just close it.
Okay.
But this is another one of the projects that has been out to bid throughout the month of June. As a reminder, this is a GFA-funded project. It is one of the four projects that we have received funding for. This project actually works in tandem with another one of our GFA projects, which will be coming before you in the coming months, and that is the sanitary sewer master lift station project. So what this is, is our sanitary sewer collection system rehab. And so, as you'll recall, at the May 22nd work session, GMC, our engineer for this project, had presented kind of the scope of work for this project. And you'll recall that there was a map showing that the city has four essential basins that are related to our sewer collection system. This is addressing work in the north, northwest basin, which is basin number one. And this is one quarter of that basin that will be addressed. So on July the 1st, we had received seven packages for this project. I would like to read the bids because, again, they are all over the place. First bid was RDJE Incorporated at three million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. We had Cajun Construction at three million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, seventy-six dollars. Townley Construction at one million, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Inliner Solutions at one million, six hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. FS Scarborough at three million, four hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and six cents. Cam Contracting at two million, one hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents. And Metals and Materials Engineering at two million, two hundred and two thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. And so, as a reminder, this project is to go in and clean and televise our sewer mains and our manholes to determine the condition of what they are in. And so, the way that the project was bid out is that all of these companies return the price per linear foot. This is what it's gonna cost to clean and televise. This is what it's gonna cost to do this type of repair. This is what it's gonna cost to line a manhole, to line a mallet, to do a point repair, to do short liners. And so, the bids were based on all of these things. And to a certain degree, an assumption of how many of each type of repair we would have once we get in there. The only way that we know what we will actually end up being, or the total cost would end up being, is once we get in there and clean and televise everything. And then we sit down and we look at all of the tapes and say, okay, that one, this one actually needs to have a short liner. This one is terrible, it needs the entire main to be lined. This one, the manhole can just be patched, this one, the manhole needs to be fully lined. And based on all of the prices within the package, you can then say, okay, the total amount is going to be X.
My turn.
The GFA loan is for 1.5 million dollars. And you saw, heard, that there are bids up here in excess of 3.5 million dollars. So Inliner Solutions is the apparent low bidder. Their bid came in at 1.6. That is including a bid alternate of installing skater in each one of the lift stations. GMC has reviewed all of these packages. And it is their recommendation that we proceed with Inliner Solutions for their full amount, including the bid alternate of one million, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars and some change. But what we will do is, we know we don't have that. And so, once the cleaning and televising is done, and we have made our assessment, our priority list, said that we're gonna do all of these things, we work until the money is used up. And so, there may have a point where there is still work left to be done in this basin. And then we will have to look and say, okay, we have money maybe in our sewer work order that was funded last year for contractors, maybe we pull some of that to be able to finish it. Maybe we look at something else. Hopefully, we will be able to do as much as we possibly can, possibly do the entire list. However, we will not know until we get in there and actually clean and televise. And so, we will meet with Inliner Solutions, GMC has recommended a meeting with them as well, to describe what our situation is, how this is being funded, that we want to work up until we get to that point, that we can no longer work any longer, and then see what we can do from that point regarding what is left. So what we would ask is, again, that you authorize the mayor to execute any and all documentation that we related to a contract, any legal documents, contingent legals, review and approval of those documents.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions for your counsel?
Make a motion to accept quotes from Inliner Solutions LLC and authorize the mayor to sign any and all contract documents, contingent on legal.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion, right, second.
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor? Other? Thank you, counsel.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, report, thanks. You don't want to start talking, Mr. Fast, is that not part of your role, sir?
Oh, boy. Welcome, folks. I noticed a large consortium of people from the city and the county, but mostly, I think, from the county. So I'll take the opportunity to educate y'all on what we've been doing in our local infrastructure committee for the last several years. There seems to be some confusion about whether we want growth or we don't want growth, or we've had growth, or we haven't had growth. And the reality of that situation is, is that our growth is limited by our resources. And I'll be talking about that a few lines down. But as far as managing the growth in the city of Jasper, which is growing slower than our county percentage, we've been in suspension of development projects over the last four years for two, almost two and a half, and it will be three years. So we suspended projects, we suspended new projects. We have, we're now in a situation where we are being very diligent in evaluating site plan review because it's not whether we want it or we don't want it. We have to be able to legally provide services to these people once we allow them to live for. And so, the fact that Jasper is growing beyond its bounds is just absolutely not true. When we first started this journey, after thirty years of no service, not maintaining our infrastructure, not protecting our water sources, not taking action to fix those water sources, the first thing that we had to do, because the construction of these projects over these thirty years had not been proved properly, hadn't been designed properly, hadn't been maintained properly, we had to figure out what we had. So we went on an extensive journey to develop a master plan of all of our infrastructure, including wastewater and sewer, as well as water and water treatment, evaluate how much water we had, how much we didn't have, where we could get it, where we couldn't get it. We had to do that. And you don't just go and you ask your neighbor on how you do that, despite what some people in this community think. It costs a lot of money to do that, and it has to be done professionally, has to be done accurately, and it has to be documented thoroughly. So we've done that. We have it documented. So we now know what it looked like when we got here. And now we're starting to look at, what is it gonna look like in forty-five years? We're looking at what it's gonna look like forty-five years. And how much it's gonna cost us to get there? And how are we gonna get that money? And we're doing all those things. We're not just sitting around and approving parks, which we need and people want. We're not just doing that, sitting around and not protecting you. The bottom line on our ISO rating, you have safety insurance, but people in the city of Jasper are safer today than they were when we started this journey with our two new chiefs just a few years ago. Safer today. They have better fire protection, and we feel like we have better police protection. So no cameras. That's not my camera, some people, I mean, that's not my committee, so we get a little bit out of it. So that's where we are. So we have a master plan, we have a project list, and we have a way to develop capital improvements to get there. And we're currently in the process of doing our own comprehensive plan. That doesn't mean we don't wanna be with the county anymore. That doesn't mean we're dividing ourselves from the county. That comprehensive plan allows us to meet all the statutory requirements. Statutory requirements, that means the laws that you have to do when you do certain things. So we have to have statutory requirements when we do impact fees. And that's what we wanna do. So we're gonna be doing impact fees. We're currently going through a strategic plan, which includes a comprehensive plan to determine it.
That also opens itself for great funding at the state.
That's correct, that's correct. So from the development of local infrastructure, yes, our infrastructure is crap. It has been. The entire country's infrastructure is crap. But we have, this council, and not just me, this entire council and our staff have worked on developing an evaluation of what's going on, how to fix it, how to pay for it, and we're moving forward with it, including water treatment projects, wastewater projects, runoff projects, to the ten of thirty-plus million dollars that we have to spend on this stuff. So that's where we are. We currently have, we're limiting our site plan reviews. We're not accepting new projects, stop new projects, haul these projects, sort of, yeah. I'm having to tell friends that I've known for thirty years who wanna buy or sell property here that we cannot, the only water we can get you is, if that site has water already on it, you can use that water. Because we've done our projections for the developments that we've approved. I may be wrong, but I'm pretty sure the last residential development we approved was in 2021, four years ago. And the one before that was 2019. Both of these were on our agenda tonight because those projects are just starting to get underway. And all of these projects that we're doing and did then had limitations on how fast those projects could be built because we knew we had a problem. We knew it then, we just didn't know how bad it was. So that's the development of the local infrastructure. It's not that we don't want to work with the developers. We do wanna work with the ones that have good developments. They need to follow our laws. They need to follow our laws. Thanks, sir.
My name's Tom Haggman, so you must like.
Thank you for voting for the budget amendment. It's nice to be doing that mid-year, still waiting end of the year and finding surprises after vote on, so that's very positive. I think we discussed the handbook that sorry been approved. I think the budget amendment is a big day coming out, I think, just this month.
Yep. Thanks staff for their hard work in getting that done and getting to this, so we do appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, press, we're done, we're through with the link.
I think approval of the sanitary sewer collection rehab is a done. And the forty-first step. Probably not through. Kim, am I right that the GIS, this is part of the GIS?
It will answer some questions that we have been unable to figure out in our system. Namely, we are showing some manholes that we have been unable to find, and we believe that there may not be manholes. And so, that cleaning and televising part of that will tell us where some of the restrictions in our system are. Like instead of a manhole, we feel that there may be a fitting that turns the alignment instead of the ten-state standard of groove method of using a manhole to turn alignment.
I think the important thing is, is a continuing step to get to a point where we don't wake up and do surprises on a regular basis. So it's a very positive movement.
So the projects coming down the road are lift station projects, water treatment updates on our facility. We have runoff projects, I can't remember right now.
Power distribution.
Just change, right. Which is try to keep, try to get rain and such out of your sewer system because if that happens, you gotta treat that water anyway. And it dilutes your inflow to your plant, but you're still actually treated, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Parks and factors, Mr. Evans?
All right, well, the one update I gave earlier is just reminding folks about Lee Newton Park and having then the new power pedestals and water down there. So excited that Josh and team were able to get down there and attack it. So excited that Josh and team were able to get down there and attack it. My first meeting, we had a quote come in, it was right about five hundred thousand. A little dawning seeing that number at your first meeting, so to see our guys take care of it is really great to see. And then the other part of it is Doris Whittington drove by there last week to a great surprise. Over by the pump track, Josh and team have been grading. And so if you do use a pump track, you won't fall off from three foot. It's now graded, so there's an edge around it that looks really sharp over there. So those two of these, I have questions.
Chief, I'm excited. Sorry, I'm listening.
Yeah, well, the fire, you had a big news tonight, and the coolest, it's all down for the hard work, all the second weeks of it. I think it's great. Dr. Propp said it best, you know, you're receiving better services now compared to four years ago. So it's great to see.
I needed to start to see how far we've come with from exciting and how we're moving forward. So we do appreciate that.
Just thank you.
Now for police, I will say with everyone in attendance, everyone hears gun range, but there's so much more that goes into it. You saw the pictures of fire down there doing rappelling and so forth. So this training isn't just about shooting guns, right? There's so much more that takes place, domestic disputes, car chases, there's different things that they'll be able to do down there outside of just making noise of kind of the things out, and that's a portion. It's like what chief was saying about fire, you know, three, four percent are fires, but they do have to train for that. So that's what I'll say about that.
All right, folks, our city major's office, city major conference.
Mr. Mayor, council, you mentioned it, Mayor, of kind of beginning meeting, but it's been on my heart, I don't often do this, but for whatever reason, whether it's because of that twelve-year-old, or whether it comes as a city manager, the weight of the office at times, big or small, is when you have a tragedy that unfolds, as it is in Texas, it's easy to start thinking about warnings and what we should have could have. Just want to remind us all, just pray for peace and comfort for everyone involved. Let's never forget about the human element of any decisions that we make at the local level. Sidney County has a huge impact. We weigh it very heavily anytime we get together as a leadership team. We meet once a week, all the departments to determine all the events we have, and although it may seem very routine, you're just one moment away from tragedy. Now granted, you have natural disasters and you have man-made, we have to take into account both of these, and it kind of segues into, I'd like all of our public safety to come in the room and stand. Come on in.
Thank you, Cruz, my question.
So, so ladies and gentlemen, regardless of county, city, this is your community leaders with regards to how Friday, we have, we have people in this room, our street department, we had over thirty people, it's what we call an all call out to do an event. The way that we measure success is safety. Other people, I don't marginalize the way that our residents or visitors define success, but from this chair, in light of some, some things that happened that we've been blessed not to have happened, that's what you want to account for. You want to walk away, get home at whatever point in time on Friday, knowing that you did the very best job in executing the plan that you laid out, and it's very stressful, it's very time-consuming, there's all sorts of other variables that we have to account for. I do not wear a badge, but I have to help supply the men and women of our public safety with the best possible advice to these elected officials to make decisions. So ultimately, the weight of making decisions can sometimes be a little heavy, but not as heavy as knowing that when you have to respond to an incident. So I just wanted to thank the sheriff, chief, assistant chief, thank y'all. Mr. Mayor, a few more if you could entertain. Just wanted to, I got, I got, everybody's favorite person is Josh, so Josh is going to be here, but we got to put on camera because he'll come in and he'll want to look at the camera and say, yes, Josh, we appreciate you as well, our parks, our public works director. Just to kind of follow back up from the June second meeting to council, referenced it earlier, but we did provide the county with our twenty-twenty-six list. They did not consider the I G A, but will move forward with the five-year squash referendum. As reflected on tonight's agenda, we are partnering with the county regarding the geo-bond debt pledge of squash monies. That is, in fact, just to help us leverage the possibility, if squash twenty-twenty-six were to be approved, of being able to obtain some of that monies upfront. Very excited, talking about, this is coming up Saturday, our third Downtown Live. Obviously, we look at the forecast, I think if you were there the last month, there was a moment where there's, again, there's the element of uncontrolled lightning, wind, rain. I do believe that D D A and concert, Josh and Carly did a phenomenal job responding. We did a quick pause, we headed back in, had a successful evening, and I hope that, God forbid if something would happen again with weather, that we would do the same. We mentioned at the June twenty-sixth work session, but Kim, I want to talk briefly about the work on Whitfield.
Yes. So as you recall, we have a two-inch galvanized water main that feeds the west side of Main Street, which would be the fronting on Mark Whitfield Street. And so there is two blocks of our businesses downtown that are fed by a two-inch line. And as we all know, galvanized main, over time, will become corrosive, and it turpulates, and what was originally about this size diameter will neck down to where you can't push a pencil through. And so those businesses have been having issues with pressure, doing things as simple as running the faucet and being able to flush the toilet at the same time becomes a challenge when we have multiple people downtown for events or on a busy Friday night or Saturday. And so the city will be replacing that two-inch main along Mark Whitfield, starting at B B Carroll, ending at a new hydrant back behind Jasper Drug somewhere. The alignment is not completely finished. There are a ton of utilities back there, and so we are having a difficult time finding a place that we can actually coexist with everyone else. But what we feel like we will be doing is probably going in the road, which is my least favorite place in ever possible to have a main, but it will be in the on-street parking, the parallel parking on the west side of the road. And so it will not be backed up against Jasper Drug and those businesses. It will be on the opposite side of the road, running down through that parallel parking spot through there. That is a heavily traveled road. That is a great cut through for folks that may not want to be dealing with the traffic that is on Main Street, people backing out, things like that. And so it is going to be slow going once we get started. It will be a block at a time. We have started our notifications to the businesses back there, and then Carly will be paying everyone a visit this week to make sure that they have gotten the information. At this point, we believe we will be starting the week of August the eleventh. Our contractor is going to be out of town towards the latter half of July. We want school to go ahead and get started and have all of those first-day jitters with everyone trying to drop off and do all of those things, because Jasper Middle School is right there in the mix as well. And so we'll be working with them. I've notified the school board today, and it is very likely, if you have a student that will be attending Jasper Middle School, you'll probably get something from us when you are going to orientation to those first-class meetings, things like that of this project. We anticipate that it will take about three weeks to do that work. Once they finish, they have to pressure test, chlorinate, and then do the bacteriological tests on that main before they can start the process of tying all the surfaces open. So it is a slow process, unfortunately. Being in the road makes it a little slower. And then anything that we don't know that we may come upon, field condition-wise, could make it a little slower here. And so please bear with us as we are doing that work. It is an attempt to try and improve things in our downtown area through our businesses.
It's going to be a pain, it's going to be an obstacle for just a minute. Do we have just a process of age of what you think that line, how long that lasts?
So the almanac hasn't been used in a long time. My guess, just based on the age, it's at least fifty years old and probably worn by Sutherby Long.
Our businesses downtown have been experiencing issues, so this should be of great help to them. Mr. Douglas, I think you had some others?
Few, few more. Although Chief Chair, you were a little reticent to say, believe it or not, it's been about twenty-three years ago since I've been on my insurance hat. So I will tell you, a little rusty, so don't hold me to it, but it is a tangible benefit to go from a five to a three. So I just wanted to put that into dollars and cents, and kudos to you and your team. And although we emphasize money at times, I want to underscore the fact that less than a year ago, your training saved a human being's life that otherwise, based upon my tenure here before, I know for a fact that this person has a life today that otherwise, who had gotten trapped, the contractors, is alive because of your training and your leadership. So please don't ever marginalize the importance of what you and Ian are doing for the team. Hold the public to know that it is vitally important for you to continue to do that. So kudos to that. You cannot put a price on a human life, period. I don't care what you say, you cannot. Would like to thank you all for the budget amendments. That is an opportunity to, as Mr. Looney said, not get you by surprise. As with everything, you have to look at revenues, you have to look at expenses, you have to make sure that as you're adjusting your revenues and expenses relative to the fact that in order for Chief Chair to continue to have the standards, we do have to rely on part-time positions, based upon the fact that a full-time position for firefighters is nearly three thousand hours. So one of the ideas, if you're interested in looking at our budget, you'll see that the salaries increased in fire. That's not to say that we've included more firefighters, it's the fact that Lindsay has had to go in and adjust based upon the fact that our part-time that we budgeted for, we had to increase that to about nine hundred dollars per. That's still not half of three thousand. So again, it is a benefit, it's a cost savings for the community to leverage the night part-time positions, but those are the type of things that we have to just continually look at. Additionally, when we have committee meetings and we look at associated needs of saying, hey, we do not have millions of dollars for our training area, but could we utilize fifty to seventy-five thousand to go towards fencing and door protective areas of dirt? Those things that are otherwise not encumbered or budgeted, we began talking with you all in April, the May work session, we got brought it to fruition, June, we directed us to move forward, we're saying, can you be appropriate budget amendments so we can look at that one-time use of monies for that capital expenditure, and how can we continue operating at this level? So thank you all for that. Thank you for the continued diligence. One of the things that I am pleased to be part of is, I was here in twenty nineteen when we did the referendum for the twenty-twenty squash. Part of one of the items tonight, and you'll reference the fire station, there are certain projects, such as for a park, that was approved by the voters, and there were some of you that, based upon my background in government, I said that the million, million and a half that we had allocated in squash monies was not going to do maybe anything than grading, bathroom, maybe a little quiet. So the leverage with a million dollar grant to then send to fruition with landscaping and a little stage area, I think is phenomenal to have that two-point formality leverage in order to achieve, accomplish what we set out six years ago. So I do want to just continue to talk about the deliverables that we are going to try to do, do the groundbreaking for Perro, ribbon cutting, hopefully in October. Chief, October, something, something in October.
I'll have it operational for that, like a nice clean duct cover.
So that's Station fourteen, the fire session, again, one of the deliverables that we want to do. And then at that point, the fire engine that was ordered about thirty years ago may come to us, but we have those monies encumbered. So we are getting to a point that your twenty-twenty squash monies, you're delivering on what you said you were going to do, encumbered, we've been good stewards. So I just want to thank you all for your diligence and moving forward with that. Sewer rehab, as Dr. Propp mentioned, as Kent presented, it is at times, it can be discouraging at the staff level, when you look at a state partner like G F A, and you say, we're telling you, we have a hundred million dollars worth of needs. We're asking you for twenty million dollars loan, and they come back and they say, we'll loan you eight million. And up to eight million, you put one point five million towards this project, one point five for this one, three for this one, and two for this one, and you're done. And so the importance of these bids this evening, ladies and gentlemen, is the fact that we are at least on track, at least with this one project, of being at the point of accomplishing that particular goal that we set out years ago. So I know at times it may seem like we're being overly celebratory, it's because when you open a bid and you hear three plus million, and you know you've got one and a half, and you know that the only way you got that money was a state entity would only going to grant you that much money, we're trying to deliver to our customers and to our residents, and so we feel the pressure at times to say, look, please help us out, partners, give us a good pricing, give us a good product. So the reason we may seem a little over-exuberant at times is when it comes in at three million, and that's the first one you hear, you think, oh my gosh, what's going to happen there? So by the time you get to the one-six, you're like, okay, we can work with that. So let's just work with that. So I wanted to celebrate that and just explain sometimes the quirkiness that goes into managing the local level. So with that, I do not know, Kim, if our computer system, that we did pay to have fixed, so what Brandon Picken did, do we have, although we're really not going to do it this evening, but.
No, but I have my list.
So celebrate our voice.
Yes. So, you know, we do work anniversaries towards the end of every meeting, and tonight will be no exception. With our fire department, we have Chris Buckner with four years, Bryce Futch with two. We have our very own Abby Brundage in our planning department with her first year under her belt. We have Charles Jones, thank God for Charles Jones, in our water utilities department, who is celebrating sixteen years. Taylor Logan in our water utilities department, celebrating three years. And then John Swinler with our police department. I would ask that all of you hold him a little extra close in your heart. Sergeant Swinler, is that correct? Sergeant Swinler is also serving in the U.S. Army. He has been called for active duty, and so you can read between the lines what that means and where he is going. And so he is a part of our family, and we want to make sure that he and the men and women that he is working with come back to us safely. So please think about them, because there are real people going out and doing these things in our world, and we want them back with us. So that is what I have.
Thank you. That's all.
Insert the fan. City Council call me, council. What was yours? You go first.
Oh, I'd be glad to, bro.
Good morning.
The gasp in the room. There's the door. Last time, so eight years ago, we started, this council started on a journey, and it was based on public interest. We had a year of downtown alliance meetings, which was a partnership with our Chamber of Commerce. Amy Lee chaired that, and we had this many people in the room every month, pretty young, telling us, we want gathering space downtown, we want pleasant restaurants downtown, and we want to see our downtown area revitalized. So we made the commitment to do what we wrapped up today. So when you hear, why are you doing this, why are you doing that? So when you hear why I'm doing this, why are you doing that? Because we made that commitment eight years ago, and now we still live it.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Yes. Any other council comments?
I think everyone told me.
Like, I'll probably catch a few things. Imagine that.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in and say, one, thank you all for coming. I'm more impressed that everyone hung around for this. So I felt invited to say something, but really want to say, I wrote down all your concerns, have yet to go over with Chief or with Brandon Douglas or anyone to go see property. So we were talking about that today to go down and look at it and plan and love to see where our opportunities lie. So thank you all for coming up with your feedback, your concerns. Nobody else can do my job better, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank y'all for coming and sharing what that does help us go on. And then I think we've mentioned earlier, and I think you're going to expiate it all a little bit, but it is more than a gun range.
Right.
So I want everybody to understand that, that it is more of a training facility, and that is part of how we have the guys doing what they're doing now and making the steps forward. When I moved here, public safety was not what it is today. So they got to have the training, as you certainly don't want them out at your house without it.
That's funny.
Well, my, my, your comments, I do have a couple things I want to touch on. There were a lot of things at the beginning. Number one, Lee Newton Park has been worked on, we had our project there, we've had contractors out there. So the power supply that's in Lee Newton Park for the festivals, for the event, that's been worked on as well as the water. You mentioned George Gimminton, and I thought the parks is out there grading, so they made some effort, Mr. George Gimminton. Station 14, fire department, did a tour today. It is nearing completion, all the interior renovations that they're working on. It's exciting to think that in Jasper, we'll have the second fire station pretty soon. That's never been done before. We continue as a city, as a organization, to work on water. When I say water, water sources. Where do we get our water? How much water are we getting from water to heat? Now, we are working with Dickens County on that. Mr. Douglas, I've been in touch with the chair at the county level, as well as our other partners that are real business other counties. That's who we're working with in a minute. And a special shout out to our staff members who is not expecting it at all. I went to the Department of Community Affairs recently and met with them, with Mr. Daniel Gaddis. Was very quick to throw out this Mary versus that. Nate Gaddis is a professional in what he does through the state of Georgia from the Department of Community Affairs. And the first thing he said was, you're the mayor of Jasper? Yes, sir. He said, you have a real professional on your staff, and I wish everyone had a Mary Gaddis. And it is not every day that people find us and make compliments. Complaints are easy to find, compliments are a lot harder. And so, Miss Mary, I want to thank you for making good partnerships and relationships with our state entities. They see you, they recognize you, and we appreciate it.
And they haven't filed a bill, they're here anymore.
That's a big applause, right? Thank you. As well as fire, we did discuss the rate of three for ISO, which is a huge improvement that is something I'm really a bit excited about. The Fourth of July testicle, so kudos to the alliance club. Besides the Miller, all of the event organizers, all the media for sharing all the information, no matter how many times you share the dates and the times, people are going to ask you, where are the dates, where are the times? Same thing with us, it's every first Monday, month 6 p.m. City Hall. And so thank you to the Alliance Club, thank you to all volunteers. Just for a snippet, just for an idea of what type of volunteers you're dealing with, I volunteered on Fourth of July at 3 p.m. until 11 p.m. in the fireworks room, and that was a shift, the last thing they did is shift turn. And I sat with a gentleman named Pinky. And if any of you know Mr. Pinky, he is a wealth of knowledge, he is a local legend. Mr. Pinky is 90 years old, or 90 years young, depending on which way you look at it. In front of 3 p.m. until 11 p.m., Mr. Pinky did not complain. Mr. Pinky sat there with me, we made a back shake, made sure nothing went wrong. And so for anyone out there that would like to complain, we have volunteer application for these. If you are younger or older than 90, we have a spot for you to volunteer, which is remembering your Alliance Club and the good work that they did, as well as our city crews, public works, Dan Public Safety did a phenomenal job. Our water crews here recently, those of you that don't think about the water crews, they're the guys out there digging their ditches, fixing the water lines, placing new lines. Recently, they were on a call for a night, and so they worked throughout the entire night to get water restored to a neighborhood, so thank you to the water, thank you for what you do. Downtown Live is this Saturday, please come and join. Dr. Proctor mentions development on his committee and the new developments that people are seeing occur. And I'll use Philadelphia around, he does the example, the townhouse center called a gun. He has mentioned that that is a phased approach back from either 2021 or 2019. There have been noted developments that this administration approved. What you're saying are land and property owners with rights to their properties that years ago went through a process to be approved, where this administration is calving, went through and phased it out, or they're going to build so many per year to help offset the resources, although we've calculated their usage. And so just, everyone's aware, we're not approving new projects. May I ask you, we've called out a report on the shore, we are currently under a water and sewer suspension. And Miss Mary, as wonderful as she is, is not accepting this type of stuff. And so we are doing our best to make sure that we are being the good stewards of this community that we also talk of. And so it's not all what you read, sometimes you need the facts, and we encourage you to engage as well as. The development committee that I have up here, I'm going to ask that you and the administration meet a solid Dave Terry Biller's. Okay, Dave Terry, this left, darn it, listen. There's one opportunity.
For calving.
Along the street in front of Enslie Plaza, I want to ask that the committee revisit that idea and make sure that this council needs any input that you guys may want. I think additional parking in that area is good. I wish Mr. Terry had stuck around for just a bit. If there's a way where we can do some simple improvements to that area, that would be correct. Pro Park Phase 1, that is a huge step in the right direction, ladies and gentlemen. As Dr. Proctor mentioned, I was not the mayor at the time when those discussions happened. Steve Larch was not the mayor when those discussions started happening. We talked about public restrooms being on the bookends of downtown, Johnny Weaver was mayor. And we had the downtown alliance, and they attended the meetings, and we went through, and that worked in phenomenal terms. And a lot of those individuals have served in volunteer positions since then and still continue to serve. And so I appreciate all the work that's been done, but it's taken us quite a few years to get to where we need to be based on funding and resources. And lastly, the training area, I did, and Mr. Endo mentioned, I took notes. So if you were talking, and I wasn't looking right at you, I apologize, I was trying to write some notes, and I got, I got a full page of stuff. And I want to make sure that everyone knows kind of where I'm coming from on this. It's not just a police department training area, it's also for our fire department. So it would be for both departments. But a lot of things have been marred with your good ones, and I took note of these. I want to make sure that we, as a council, and first off, as a public safety committee, which is mistaken, Mr. Endo, this is your public safety committee that meets with the administration and your chiefs, make sure that we have your concerns, your anxiety, or your questions in the back of our minds so we can address them. I think, Mr. Jones, one thing we talked about, so I didn't really have a lot of information to give you. You know, if I gave you a phone call and said, hey, I don't have a lot of details right now, but I can call you back from the ghetto, it may be a lot more fair to me, whether that's a little honor. Couple folks in here had a council championship meeting. One thing everyone borrowed was Sheriff Craig, and the gun range he has, and he does have one, yes. We have used it, and they have been great partners, and they continue to be great partners. And it's not at all about, oh my gosh, we're not getting along. It's about the city having an asset or a resource that they can dedicate and use whenever they need. And I say the city, because again, it's multi-agents. And so I don't really want to thank the sheriffs kicked us out, or we don't disagree on this thing. They also have use of their ranch, and it books up. So it's not anything about relationships. I think we're good there. The public safety committee will discuss this. A couple of the things that I wrote down, the zoning, the location, noise, environmental impact, surveying and or footplanning, high notes, EP monitoring that may or may not be needed, night training versus day training. I mean, I did speak to someone about that. Wildlife impact. So those are all, that's not the entire list, that's some of them that I wrote down that just stuck out to me. What they want to put as EPD, we are inconsistent, constant communication only, EPD, whether it's on wastewater or water. We have built relationships with them under the administration the last couple of years to make sure that the state agencies around water and wastewater knows who we are. We are, we are pretty good with them, so if there's monetary need, certainly take that into account. Night training versus day training, I've, I've made it pretty clear to the chiefs that night training is certainly a hot button for me. It's not just you, that's also a hot topic for me. And that would concern me and force to address the question is, if anything like this were to be nearby location, I would also be concerned. So I appreciate you coming out. What you can expect from us, what can you expect from this body and this organization is communicate to you that are interested, communication to adjacent property owners. But what that means is, I have to have information to communicate. The good news is, it is extremely early in the process. Like this is, this was a thought from staff where chiefs and departments have met, discussed the need, they brought it to us, and we discussed it in a work session in a public meeting, and you know about it. And so that's the great thing. The videos are working, the newspapers working, that's really good. Every first Monday, 6 p.m. at City Hall, right here, this is where we have our meetings. So stay plump, yeah, stay engaged, because if there's a question, we certainly want to answer it if we have the information. But communication to the adjacent property owners, a lot of you said that you were abutting or adjacent property owners. I want to make sure that you have the same information that everyone else appears as. As soon as they have it, we'd like to communicate it, because that, I think, is really the best way I can help you with the concern and anxieties. The information we may have that we may get, we may not like, and we might tell you, yeah, we don't like it either. Or we may say, yeah, we really like it, and you like it. You don't like it, kill it. I'm not sure, but we can certainly address them. That may look like meetings, it may just look like emails, I'm not sure what that looks like, but we can certainly navigate those waters together. And then compromises where possible. You know, compromise is a huge thing in our society, I think we often overlook. I'm not always right, I've made plenty of mistakes, this body's not always right, we've made mistakes, all of us do. So if we work together to mitigate some mistakes, they'll win, that'd be great. And then please make sure that we have your information. If you were wanting to stay up there, wanting to be engaged from this organization, please make sure, I know there's a side of sheet in the back, I don't know if you need an extra piece of paper, but please make sure we have your name, your number, your email. If you want information, social media is a great location to get it, if you're following the right pictures. Do not just trust what any person is posting, what any person is telling face to face. Make sure you're getting your sources from the right business source. The media is here at our meetings, we appreciate them covering our meetings. I think that's how, you found out about with the newspapers. And so please, make sure that you stay engaged, and there's sheets in the back. So before you leave, if you want to stay up there, give us the information to be able to reach out to you. Meetings that are like this council meetings that we have, the public comment section's been out in January, so it's fairly new to us as well as it is to you guys. What's not new is the actual formation and operation of a council meeting. Council meetings or memberlet meetings are not intended for the back and forth question and answer, it's kind of all of me, I'm just a regular offset meeting on a Tuesday, sitting around the table. But those are things that we can offer to those that want, a council meeting is more structured, where we have the items that council has before them, and we're looking for action to be taken and information to be released. So we try to keep you as short as possible, and I say that, and it's exactly. So please make sure we have your information. Thank you for being here. If you have questions, we may not have the answer, but if you will stay engaged with us, we will do our best to stay engaged with you and to keep you up there. So those are the comments I have. On the next, I have, we do have an executive session listed as well as state panel label. I'll give everyone a few minutes to leave, if you'll, please make sure we have our information.